It's about eight thirty, well, eight forty. Eight thirty-eight, we're good by that other clock. And this is the public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget for county Texas. It, y'all should have received your copies of the budget. And I hope that you've had the opportunity to look over these. And this time we will open the floor for anyone that wants to discuss. Feel free to do so. And as I always try to state, prior to passing any budget, we stretched a dollar till it reached and then some. Which sometimes it's painful to stretch the dollar. Sometimes we actually go over stressing the dollar somewhat. But the justification's there and I believe we've done the best we could do considering, well, considering the growth pattern in the county and considering the the new businesses that are coming, the new people that are coming, the demands upon not only transportation, but also law enforcement, first responders in general. And then the judicial side of the budget as well. If you had the opportunity to look through here, there are pie charts. And Lord knows we love pie charts because it do spell out the true story a lot better than me sitting here for an hour and a half or so and trying to explain each portion. The, you'll notice on, let's see, executive summary side, where your combined revenues, combined budget revenues are listed, what the totals are. Where our money actually comes from. You know, at Lauren, Texas is the largest percentage. There are some fuzz that come in under sales tax. There's very little under other taxes. And there's licenses permits. There's some intergovernmental buddies that are also there. Fines, fees and forfeitures are listed. Charges for services. Investment income, thank you, Ms. Harris. I know you're out there somewhere. Other revenue and then operate transfer in numbers. You can make flip page, provide budget expenses. If you take a pretty good look at that, public safety is our largest expense. At thirty-six percent. Sure, if you may not believe that, but it used to be around fifty percent. But as categories, other things consolidate and that's just the way it works. Public transportation, which I believe that would fall under the road and bridge guys. Seventeen percent, imagine that. I wish it would match the sheriff's number, but, or actually judicial number, but unfortunately it doesn't. Debt service, if you'll look at this real close, we have a three point three one, three one percent debt service. That's the lowest in the county, period. Any way you look at it, of the largest or the larger taxing entities. So that, in my opinion, does mean that we at least adhere to the rules and we spend our money wisely and conservatively. Of course, when I mentioned public safety that, you know, is Sheriff's Department, Cosmos offices. There's legal, there's judicial. And you might want to even consider combining all those together just for, I guess, to kind of understand the big picture. You know, the cradle to grave judicial is what I would call it, which would be the public safety inclusive is a big number. In other words, Catherine, unfortunately, if you go to jail this morning and, and you go all the way through till they're found this position, that's where that number is derived from and what it costs, it is quite expensive. It is. So, of course, on the debt service side, no matter what we do, that's the first thing that comes out of the budget. We have to pay our debts first. General administration, of course, that would be everybody that works here, pretty low number, considering comparatively at ten percent. That the pie charts really do help tell the story a lot quicker than me trying to explain everything as we go through there. You know, we do have a general fund, which is what we mostly operate. Well, actually I get to do the majority of the general fund. But when it gets down to road and bridge, I don't really have a say so in road and bridge, y'all. Okay, that, that's going to be something that's up to the commissioners. It's their money. Okay? So, just looking through the pie charts, which I said again, would be the easiest way to, to relate to what is listed in the budget itself. Are there any other suggestions? Are there any other questions? Do they have their concerns or even comments? It's
I have one.
Yes.
Um, it may not seem like much, but it's important. Um, I think I've given everybody a copy. I have a person in my office that we use to work on technology issues. He is a specialist in this area. He has been trained and has experience in this area. He has been helping us out tremendously, but he is being paid at a park sound area of about a hundred and seven thousand. But he is an IT person. This year alone, he's going to save us money. What's a good example? We're about to do cash testing and L and A testing on the election equipment. Every year we pay someone to come in and do that for us. That's thousands of dollars. We paid part to come in and pray this on it this last election. The previous group was paying Tommy Brant to come in and do it. My point is it has to be done. It's got to be paid for, but this person can do it for the county or for me. And that alone will help pay for his pay increase. I have two overfunded line items that are significant. They're particular just to my office. The first one in the O one O section of my budget, it's called state birth death fees. That means every time we do a birth certificate on the state computer, we send that money to the state of Texas. You know, they charge us a fee and we pay the bill every month. That's never, in my whole experience, gone over ten thousand. That line item's funded for twenty-five. We've never spent it. I'm recommending that we move five thousand out of it to cover this. The other part of his salary is paid out of the O two eight records management fund. The office expense on that one is five hundred thousand. We don't spend that either. We can move money out of that quite easily and cover the cost of his increase. I guess my point is, is that it's easily paid within my budget. We just move a little money around and we get this guy at the level he should be. And I'm not talking about a hundred thousand dollar salary. I'm talking forty-five. It's a fair salary for what he does. And I'm respectfully requesting that you make these little changes within, just within my budget. And Jay, it does not increase any money for the county whatsoever. And I understand it's an unusual quest, but this is an unusual position. And we're in unusual times and this guy has done wonderful things for our office. He just created the online training system for all of our election workers. It's fantastic. He did all the specs for the RFP for the Coring Tech that you're about to review. You know, we would have had to gone out and got help with that. He saves Nick a ton of time because we're not calling Nick every five seconds to come fix and do stuff for us. He can do it right there. He did the notice system that's about to go up. It's going to change everything for this county. I mean, really significant, you know, work for this county. And we're not paying him at that level. He's been doing that for me as a favor, but I think he's a good employee. I think he's proven himself and I would really like to keep him on and keep that position going. Also want to remind everyone that the IT position started in the county clerk's office. These kinds of things seem to, you know, start with us and then everybody else will end up needing it. But way back when, Delia hired Daryl Taylor because she needed help. And then he eventually became the IT guy and that's where our IT department came from. So this kind of stuff that he's doing for us might very well spread into y'all's departments at one point. But right now, the new changes in the law, the requirements from our office, what we have to do on a web level, on a software level has expanded so much exponentially that without this person, I don't know how to do it. And I have to do it, which means we're going to be hiring consultants left and right. It's going to cost money. And I guess my point is we're going to pay for it one way or another. This to me is the least economical, the best, best economical way to do it, least expensive way to do it. And he's worth it. So I respectfully request you to make the little lineup changes. Again, that only affects my budget. So, and it won't affect bottom line or anything else. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Bruce, Greg, David, got anything? Leon, you have anything to do?
No, no.
All righty. Well, it's eight fifty. I believe we have another spot we need to go to next. I'll get on my pages correct. We'll close out this portion of the discussion on the new 2024 budget. We'll move on to public hearing on the proposed 2023 tax rate, which we set at forty-seven, says point four seven zero zero zero. It, I'm sure you've seen all the notices concerning the tax rate itself and where we're sitting. If you remember about two years ago, our tax rate was at point five seven eight eight and it sat there for a long, long time. And each year it goes down and it feel good about that. The, some of the things that you have to consider are what is? Well, where does the no new revenue rate lie? And where does the voter approval rate lie? And that's facetious in a way because we've always called it the effective rate versus the rollback rate. You know, the legislature felt it definitely necessary to change the name. To me, sometimes it's a little bit confusing with people. But a lot of our revenues that we did receive this year came in from new properties, not old properties that were reappraised. So therefore our tax rate did drop. So we're proposing a tax rate of point four seven zero zero zero. It's below the rollback slash voter approval rate. And it's only about two pennies above the no new revenue rate or what you speak called the effective rate. Now, with that being said, you know, a lot of folks say, well, why don't you set it at the no new revenue rate? I can tell you why. Pretty easy. If I did that, or I say, ah, we do this collectively. I can't really effectively fund the sheriff's department or any other department for the potential for growth throughout the coming year. It's real simple. It, it ties your hands, so to speak, that if the, you know, new equipment for the sheriff's department, new equipment for road and bridge, new equipment for any of the other departments inclusive throughout the entire county that are essential in making this machine that we call county government operate effectively. We are always two years behind. Okay, so Chief Needland, it's great to see you, but I'll give you a good example. If Chief, if you built a brand new home, a brand new home and, and you moved into that house on January the first. Okay, but I hope you do, you build a brand new house and you move into it on January first. But the revenues that I would see derived from that home on the adware side of taxation, I wouldn't see it really hit the books for two years. But yet we still like to supply the services to you. Sheriff Stiles go by there and check on you, you know, and he will. The, you know, your, your precinct commissioner still has to, you know, run by your house and take care of a pot holder. Lord knows, maybe build a new road. And, but yet I still don't see that, that those funds for two years potentially because it takes a year to hit the books and it takes another year to collect. That's just the way it works. So if we set the, the tax rate at a middle location, which mind you, there's only about three pennies difference between what we called effective rate or no new revenue rate and rollback rate or as they call it, voter approval rate. There's only three pennies there. So we're just, we're just hitting just below the rollback or voter approval rate. And that's so we can keep our head above water and still afford to look for the future and perform for the future and get the necessary equipment, personnel and such, and keep the government running and still stay within our mains. Lord knows, I know that, I don't think anybody on this commissioner's court would ever try to exceed the voter approval rate or the rollback rate. But I've seen it tried. The city of Dayton tried it a few years ago and they lost. They ended up having to pay it back. So our proposed rate this year is point four seven zero zero zero. So if there's any questions or any concerns, anyone would like to discuss, feel free to do so.
Well, you know, I have a hundred dollar valuation. Is that the correct language?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't have a calculator for me, but you know, really, who does? Anybody got a calculator? Wait a minute. I do, I've got, I've got topics. Okay, it just for, just for the trial and error right here. So you have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. That's its value at that. And I'm going to divide that by one hundred because that's a hundred per hundred valuation, correct? Okay. And that's going to be twenty-five hundred dollars. You multiply that times point four seven equals one thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. Okay. There it is. There it is. And if you go back two years ago at five seven eight eight, it would be a significantly higher number. So Brother Rick, you got anything you want to help us with?
Well, just complimentary, I think I've been through tax one oh one and you did a good job of laying it out there. It's, it's, it's a formula that the state has set up to say you can go with last year's values, this year's property, you know, it's, it's, it's a button. If the value goes up, the tax rate compared to last year goes down. If, unfortunately, and I, I've been in the county thirteen years doing this and I've never seen the value revert. So knock on wood, that upward trend is much, it's painful to people when they get their bill. It should be offset by the decrease in the rate. So you're kind of keeping up with it, especially this year. If everyone goes out and votes on November seventh for this Prop four. Because we've already used that hundred thousand of homestead exemption in the school tax rate. So we're sending out a provisional bill this year. Under the rare circumstance that this Prop four would be voted down, then you're going to get another tax bill showing the increase in getting a forty thousand or if you're over sixty-five and certain things, sixty thousand. That's going to be taken back and your, your, your food tax is going to go up.
Yeah.
That's a very unlikable deal because I think the wording, I haven't seen it on the ballot, but I'm sure the word is going to be something as simple as if you want your tax rate to go down, vote yes. You want your tax rate to go up, vote no. It's, but it's very, it's number four, I think was it lead thirteen, fourteen, I mean, several amendments that you have to vote on.
Well, one, one increases the homestead extension duly and then
addresses value. So it's really two oh, that was not as critical as the, the budget, but it is, it's a component of it. It basically says they can't, the C E can't increase your taxes more than X percent. And that's for a certain period. So it's kind of a one, two button. So that's four and five absolutely legitimate to consider in your vote. Not saying, again, if you want your amount. And the schools have been taken care of. It's not like, oh, the schools are having to sacrifice and lay off teachers. The state legislature did a pretty neat trick, in my opinion. They did a little, I'm not going to say it's a shell game, but they diverted you to say, we're cutting your school taxes, but they increased their compensation to the schools to offset that loss. So the schools aren't losing anything. You'd think they're going to lose, but they're not. They took, they actually paid the schools that started to allow the exemption to be increased from forty thousand to a hundred thousand. So I have to, I have to put a little civic note for you. But at the same time, if it doesn't pass, you know, if you want a bad county or any other city, you're just doing school tax that has to be increased a little bit. So hopefully that, that goes as planned. But this, the legislative jury in the truth in taxation, it's pretty much been, been the practice for as long as, you know, they started doing taxes. It allows you to do a three and a half percent increase over last years. So it gives you a little inflation, but as you know, inflation this year, I know your rural material, your vehicles, everything got more than three and a half percent, but it's still allowing that. So you're not really just spending more money. You're paying for things that have gone up and you're still keeping it under that. You know, lower than the actual voter approval rate. So I think it's a good trend of dropping rates and get a little benefit with the exemption going up this year.
You know, explain just a little bit on the three point five percent cap that we all have had drilled into us for the last three or four years.
Right. That's, that's the three and a half percent that says even if you want to do the same rate as last year, we'll allow you to go three and a half percent above that and still not have to go on the ballot. The water districts and the small taxing units, they can go up to one hundred, one oh eight. And that used to be what the counties could do. But when they compressed that rate a few years ago, that was one of their, we're going to lower taxes. They forward anyone like a city or county that wasn't a smaller district, wasn't a water, I guess they had better lobbyists. They were able to keep the one oh eight without going to the election. But the city and the counties are strictly two and three and a half. So that cap is, when you take everything considered to be the same as last year on this year's values, then you get a three and a half bump to get you up to that voter approved. Now, if you go enter anything over that, you can still do that. But like you said, you're at the risk of having a bond, I mean, a petition. And they can get signatures, which is not hard to get signatures. Accuse the entity of charging you too much taxes. And then it gets voted on. And that could happen, that could be sixty days later into your budget and you've got to come up. And then we've got to send out new bills. We've got to check, you know, get new payments in. It creates a lot of confusion, a lot of heartache with the taxpayer trying to explain to them. And same time they're getting a refund check, but they don't understand the process. So I'd say stay away from it. But again, it's still a tool you have. You can just have to do it to keep things going, like you said. Fortunately, we experienced, what was it, four and a half billion dollar increase in our values or, I mean, it's a large increase that allowed you to have a little wiggle room there.
Well, that's on new properties.
Yes, on new properties. So you'll put that in, like you said, in the next year. Another thing that I want to point out is your participation in TERS does restrict you that flexibility. I think it's pretty well noted that some of the cities who are a little more involved in TERS, it had an impact on their rate this year simply because their growth was in the TERS area. But they were, they had given, you know, back to the developer sixty-five to seventy percent of it. So they got, they got the bump and then they gave it away so they couldn't count that in their, that equity, I would call it. So just be aware of that anytime you vote on TERSs and everything else. We try to point that out to you that there's also a, there's a cost to doing that when you're figuring future years back. I'm not saying don't do that, but incorporate that into the advantages or disadvantages of participating in the TERS. Because there's three adjustments on this ten page, two hundred and fifty adjustments. But there's three of them that actually reflect what you're bombing in TERSs or any kind of payment type process. The payments got shown in a different way, but the TERS are directly peeled out.
Peeled out, given back, yeah.
So those are just future discussions, got a good rate, got a good growth and I think our, our collections over the last two years have increased over twenty-seven percent. I haven't done this year, we're on a good trend as well.
I think we, so far I think we still act quite conservatively.
Oh, you are, you are. To me, it's, it's expensive to run a county.
Yeah, it is.
But I appreciate, I know the employees appreciate the ability to recognize some coal adjustments and that's a big chunk of it. But again, the years where we came in and didn't get anything, it makes it a little discouraging to employ, like we put in the work and did so, but inflation took away anything that I had. So I think that's, that's a wise thing to do if you can afford it. And it looks like you worked that into the budget. And I think we'll get, we'll reap benefits from that, having qualified people in qualified positions.
Yes. All right, thank you, Rick. I do want to thank everyone that worked on this budget. It, it's not easy. It's quite painful at times. It, but again, as we say, we, we stretch a dollar to the reaches and sometimes it doesn't reach and so we pour a little bit more water on it and try to make it stretch a little bit further. And therefore it works. So that's, that's all the comments we have concerning the tax rate. We'll move right along into the regular session. If anyone would like to take a short break for a minute before we start, let's, let's give it a five minute break, okay? And, maybe ten minutes, Greg. Let's take a break.
Ten minutes, Greg.
Sir.
Ten minutes.
Yeah, you want ten minutes, Leon, is that okay?
That'll be fine.
Okay. Got ten.
Got it.
Yeah, I think that's a tough, this, this is the course for what he wants to go on.
We're live, John.
Ninety-five. Good morning, once again, everybody. September twenty-sixth, about nine, uh, nine nineteen A.M. And this is our regular meeting of the County of Texas. Let the records show that we have a quorum established. Commissioner Korbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire are present. Commissioner Wilson is present with us by way of Zoom. And we had this before the court. We've already had two public meetings that we've completed this morning. One concerning the budget itself, one concerning the tax rate itself. So with all that being explained thus far, we'll call the meeting to order if y'all would all rise at this time. Ms. Chambers will lead us in the pledges and Sheriff will leave in our indication.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
I pledge the flag. The Texas, Washington, under God, one indivisible.
Rightly pleased. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for the opportunities that you give us in life, Lord. Thank you for the judge, the commissioners, and their dedication to do the things necessary for this county, Lord. Lord, I pray a blessing on them, Lord. I thank you for the work done with the budget, Lord. And I know there's a vote on that today, Lord. And Lord, I know that they're limited on what they can do for everybody, and they do the best that they can, Lord. Lord, I know that you're also the great physician. It's good to see Angela here with us in the Commissioners' Court today. It's good to see Bill Hergie, Lord. It's good to see Brother Don Nealon, Lord. And Lord, I ask that you be with Leon Wilson. Commissioner Wilson, Lord, as I go through that now. Thank you for the gifts that you give the doctors and the creation of medicines that are available, Lord. And I just pray that they work. And I know, Lord, that you'll do what is right, Lord. And I know, Lord, that I just ask that you take away any pain that they may have. And Lord, be with every elected official, be with every county employee. And Lord, thank you for the blessing that you give us. Or we could go all day thanking you for the many blessings. And still we grope about the things that we don't have, and we don't count our blessings. Lord, be with this Commissioners' Court as we go through this meeting. Let them have the wisdom to do the things that are necessary to run the county the way that you would have it done. Please forgive us when we fall short. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay. Well, I don't remember seeing anything about notices and proclamations today, DeeDee. Do you have anything coming at the last minute? Okay, move on to public comments. Has anyone signed up for public comments today? You know, therefore being none. But we got a full table right there, don't we?
Judge, I don't have a couple of comments, but I just have some logistical instructions. I have for all the votes who are in the courtroom, the elected officials in the courtroom. If you all pass the budget in a minute, I have the sign-off sheets here with me. So before you leave the courtroom, if the budget is passed, if you're grateful for me, you can get the process moving along and we'll appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. You hear that, David? I'm gonna give him the piggy string out so you cannot run off. Okay, just letting you know. Okay. Uh, declare conflicts of interest. Are there any items on the agenda that would propose to be conflict of interest for anyone on the court? That then, done? Okay, let's move on down to consent agenda. Dwayne or Kim, do we have any add-ons today?
Judge, I have the, I passed those, those are two papers already, but I have the add-ons. Well, all of the day will change notices from the GED on permission.
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of those just included. But some of those are not, apart about, I'll, I'll gently look at today. And so we just need to get those, have us looking at this folks.
Ready. Does everyone else have an opportunity to look over the consent agenda? And if so, uh, entertain a motion at this time.
Make the motion to approve.
Got a motion from Leon to approve, second from Greg to approve. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Okay. That motion does carry. Thank you. Gentlemen, item number eight on the regular agenda, eight-one. Consider and approve the order that Liberty County Commissioners' Court will convene on the second and fourth Tuesday, beginning at nine A.M. of each month in a regular term fiscal year 2024. In the county courtroom, second floor, Liberty County Courthouse, nineteen twenty-three, Sam Houston Street, Liberty, Texas. And that is traditionally the times that we meet, uh, for as long as I can remember. And I can remember at least till, from far back when I was five years old, so.
Make the motion to approve.
Um, Leon, can we just not the exception of the month of December, which is not the second and fourth, but the second, third?
Yes, ma'am. I'm glad you brought that to my attention, Miss Lee. Let's make the motion to approve with the exception of December.
Which will be the second and third week instead of the second and fourth week.
Okay. All right.
Leon has been voted by second.
Yeah, motion Leon, second Greg. With the additions noted, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
My apologies, but on the add-ons for the consent agenda, I accidentally left that Mr. Post and we didn't have added.
Yes.
Um, it is the payoff from Ms. Duckdale, totally one thousand seventy-four dollars and sixty cents. We can pay for the staycation, call if anyone care for me. I'll give you a call to raise one thousand seventy-four six.
Jay, I couldn't understand it. What, what'd she say?
Uh, they left off one payoff from Matthews Department. Uh, and just wanted to add that on to the consent agenda.
How much was it?
Sir?
How much was it?
One thousand.
Thousand seventy-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
Thousand seventy-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
Thank you.
Wanting to add that on to the consent agenda, please.
I think we're sorry.
Okay.
Second.
All right, got a motion to add that on the consent agenda. Uh, with a second, is there, same as we had before, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. All right, we got it on there, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you. You bet.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. Uh, eight point two. Consider approve the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule for Liberty County, Texas. And I believe everyone has received a copy of the holiday schedule for this year. Uh, a discussion, but there is no discussion. I entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion from Leon, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number three, eight point three. Uh, consider and approve adopting the salaries of elected officials for the fiscal year ended twenty twenty-four. Uh, we all have already had several, uh, public hearings on these. I believe everyone knows what the numbers are. And with that being said, uh, is there any discussion? If there is none, then I would entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion from Leon, second from David. Further discussion? There being none, all in favor, aye, say aye?
Aye.
Say aye? Yes. Thank you. Likewise, nays.
Nay.
Nay, we have one nay. From Commissioner Korbowski, and three ayes. Thank you, gentlemen. That motion does carry. Uh, number eight-four. Consider approve adopting Liberty County budget for the fiscal year, uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And we've already gone through our public hearing. We have all the public notices, uh, for several weeks out. Matter of fact, actually had probably one more notice than we needed to put out, but we put them out anyway to make sure everybody's informed. So let's say the court entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve.
Got a motion, Leon, got a second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, uh, consider and approve adopting the twenty twenty-three tax rate of point four seven zero zero zero. Once again, we already had our public hearing discussing the tax rate and the reasons why. I believe they were adequately explained, uh, how we go through this process and how we derive at this number. At this time, I would entertain a motion. Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six, eight-six. Consider approve the twenty twenty-four position budget and the twenty twenty-four employee salaries. Uh, again, that is included in the budget. Uh, I know that the Commissioners have had the opportunity to review as well. I believe as Ms. Harris has received a copy.
I have, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, with, hopefully you've all had the opportunity to review these, and I would entertain a motion.
Make the motion, we definitely approve.
Thank you.
Got motion from Leon, definitely from Leon, uh, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-seven, consider approve the following designation of representatives of the Houston-Galsen Area Council's Year Twenty Twenty-Four Board of Directors, General Assembly and Delegate. Uh, myself, uh, as for General Assembly and, uh, our alternate would be Commissioner Arthur. And, uh, I'll say, I, I, in, I enjoy serving on that board. And, uh, this, this year, the last year, next year, I'll move up to Chair-elect. So it, the, uh, the help that HGAC gives us, you would not believe, uh, the, the assets that we have that we can call upon them to help us get through some of the problems we have in the county, especially when it comes to transportation problems, drainage, uh, just numerous things that we can call upon them. And they have the assets that we don't have to get the answers that we need. And, uh, and I will be more than happy to continue serving.
Make the motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce.
Thank you.
Second from Greg. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-eight. From Mr. Gott, consider and approve pay requests from Grant Works pertaining to the CDBG. That's Community Development Block Grant. Uh, twenty zero six six zero one three. C zero nine five housing buyout as follows. It's file number Libco zero seven zero Fortis Liberty County LLC. Purchase price is sixty-five thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars, forty-nine cents, plus an estimated closing cost of five thousand dollars. This total is not to exceed seventy thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars, forty-nine cents. Home on relocation incentive, uh, five thousand, uh, will be paid or to be paid at closing. We've been through numerous of these. These are still on the housing buyouts. I feel that you're all familiar with these. Let's say the court.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine from Commissioner Wilson. Uh, consider and approve in our local agreement, buying between Liberty County Precinct Four and the city of Dayton, Texas, to cooperate mutually in maintaining streets, roads, ditches, and recreational areas to provide better service to the public at reduced expense by avoiding duplication of equipment, manpower, and other resources. And Leon, this is just your renewal, correct?
This is just a remake of, uh, or interlocal agreement with them that we've had for years.
Yes, sir.
And you're approved.
So we got a motion from Greg, second David. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number ten from Ms. McMillan. Penny, good to see you here today. How are you? All righty, it, uh, with energy and healthcare, consider and approve public notice for optional healthcare services. Notification for energy and healthcare. Let me let you elaborate.
Hi, what's wrong?
And, uh, can you, Leon, can you hear okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And this is the same services that we've always offered. And there's no changes in the optional services. It's just the change in the format that the state wants us to publicly notify, notify the public of the services. So basically, and we did the same thing last year on the agenda, that we put it under the consent agenda. And this year, we're just moving it to the regular agenda. That way it serves more as a public notice. That way the public is more aware of the optional healthcare services that the court is approving. So it's just basically, um, the same that we've always done. It's just a different way of notifying the public of what we're doing. So that's why we put it under the, uh, regular agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the transparency side of that. You bet.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion from Bruce, second David.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Uh, there being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eleven from Ms. Soliday. And, uh, I know it's painful, Melinda.
Not as bad as it was. It's getting better.
All right. Your foot doing a little bit better, really? It's getting, getting there?
Getting there.
No, just don't go out kicking armadillos.
Not yet, not yet.
All right. On number eleven, consider and approve the RFQ, uh, request for qualifications for home demolition for, for the CDBG, uh, DR project, twenty dash, no, zero six six dash zero one three dash C zero nine five. You want to run that down to us, Melinda?
This has to do with the, uh, this, the, uh, home demolition. Uh, we had eight prospective people sign, uh, send in from RFQs. Um, our, uh, committee was myself, uh, Ewa Rodriguez, Commissioner Arthur, and Commissioner Korbowski. We, uh, we were told to choose the top three to five. We went with the top five. So the next step, once y'all, uh, see this, the next step will be to have them do walkthroughs and then get actual bids on the demolitions. I was told there's almost five hundred homes. So, um, I'm hoping that's a misquote, but I didn't realize we had quite that many.
Yeah.
So, um, that, I know it's twenty-five hundred, so that seems awfully, awfully high. I just want to say that we spoke to Grant Works about this because we are out quite a bit of money right now. And, um, Lonnie had told us that we, they have to build in sequential order. And we have bills out, or draws through, uh, draw eight, I believe. And our biggest draw is on draw seven. But this is being held up because they have to deal with these, uh, demolition. Right. So, um, we'll see if we continue to let them have closings until they get this completed. We have quite a bit of money on with them.
Right. Matthew, you have any recommendations on this?
I, I guess I'm so new to this whole thought.
I think they did, I didn't, I think so, well, Leon, uh, what's, uh, my homie is that they've had three or four people run through this job that is supposed to be handling this. And so that's how it is, and typing them along through the, Grant Works number has done it wrong. So I feel like, you know, they just need to clean it up. But we may need to stop laying and close on properties until they get this beat up. Cause he's.
Great. Yeah. I can't hardly understand who was talking. Who's, who's speaking?
That, that was.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, come on up, Angela. That was Angela.
Okay.
Hey, that was me. I was just telling, uh, then that we've talked to Lonnie when we went to Grant Works. And this seems to be something that fell through the cracks with Grant Works, uh, getting all of this. Uh, but they're, they're correcting it. That's why they're, you know, getting the bids and stuff for people to go in on. But there were a group of six or seven, uh, and I talked to them, there was a group of like six, six to eight homes that must be, um, demolition before they can build, um, GLA. And we have to bill in sequential order, but we've already, we have eight draws out. And our biggest draw is sitting on draw seven, but they have to wait till they settle this. So we may consider not letting them close on some of these, uh, homes anymore until they get this settled. Just because of the arrangement on the money that we had out with them. But I can see they're going forward with it, so.
For time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He said, what did he say? He told me that they couldn't, they don't have access to these, uh, homes right now. So I'm assuming they have to get someone to build, something along the road, what they're saying.
Do you have recommendations for this?
Uh, the only one we have is we may consider not approving more closings, you know?
Wouldn't go to come up later on, Leon, but it sounds like right now we're more or less active.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, this has to be done. Yeah. Yeah, so I think they're, they're handling it. But, um, I just think it kind of fell through the cracks. But there's not, I don't think there's five hundred.
I mean, I know, I switched the terms, I was like, there's going to be.
So bottom line, we gotta get this done.
So we can get credit.
Okay. All right, so what's the court's pleasure?
We approve it.
There's a good motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? There being none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Melinda, and thank you, Angela. All righty. Uh, number twelve. Permits inspections from Ms. Soliday. It's an information item only. It's noticed the court that LJA Engineering will be the firm of record for the whole freshwater supply project to be paid from ARPA funds. So nothing's changed there.
Nothing's changed, just for transparency. Um, y'all have already voted to select LJA.
Right. So, uh, I believe we do a motion to take no action here.
Make a motion, take no action.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon, take no action. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen from Ms. Soliday, consider and approve payment of invoices to Shawn Burton Pope Incorporated for engineering services in the amount of six thousand dollars for the Ames Sanitary Sewer Improvements. Invoice has been signed by Mayor Domain and will be paid from ARPA funds. And this is just our usual procedure that we go through for transparency purposes, of course.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number fourteen, Ms. Soliday, consider and approve payment of invoices to LJA Engineering in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars for the wastewater engineering services for the city of Arden, to be paid from ARPA funds. Mayor Johnson has signed all of the invoices. Again, this is for the transparency purposes, uh, of the project itself. Um, looks like LJ is doing a fine job for us thus far. Uh, what's say the court?
Make the motion to approve.
Got a motion from Leon. Uh, Greg, was that a second?
Yeah.
Second from Greg. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fifteen from Ms. Soliday. Just wearing you out today, aren't we? Okay.
You see this?
Considering approve the final plat for Incento Estates, section seven. This subdivision section consists of one hundred and thirty lots and six blocks and is in precinct four. LJA Engineering's letter has been approved, and their letter of approval is in this packet. And Leon, you're, you're aware of all this, correct?
No. No, that's news to me.
Okay.
We did the preliminary last meeting. We did our, the preliminary, the last meeting, so this is the final.
Okay. Exactly. What is this, Melinda?
This is the United States.
I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I am aware of it. I apologize.
Okay, all right.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, sir. Got a motion from Leon. Was that a second, Bruce? Okay, that's second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, number sixteen from Commissioner Wilson. Consider approve in our local agreement, buying between Liberty County Precinct Four, the Dayton ISD, to cooperate mutually, maintain streets, roads, and ditches, and recreational areas to provide better service to the public at reduced expense by avoiding duplication of equipment and manpower and other resources. And Leon, I know that the Dayton ISD is very pleased with the help that you've given them.
Yes, sir. It's just our standard interlocal agreement to assist them with what needs they may, they may have. And, uh, as I indicated earlier, we've, uh, had this interlocal agreement with them, uh, ever since I've been in office.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, got a motion from Bruce. I think it was a second from David. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen from Mr. C. Come on up, Harold. Uh, considering approve solicitation of bids for road materials. That time of year again.
That time. Our current contract ends, uh, November seventh. So if y'all approve this, we'll get started on that. And I don't know if we would use ARPA funnies, ARPA funds next year for it, but we'll go ahead and do it with the same language, just in case.
Yeah, um, I understand that BOP is not going to be able to provide us with number three chip rock again this year because all of it has been allocated to the state. Do we have another?
I don't know. We'll, we'll have to look and see if we find. Did you say North River has, has it?
Nice River does have, we don't, we don't.
Yeah, they used to bid. They had bid on us for years. We'll talk to them and see if they have it this time.
I think. Go ahead. Yeah.
I don't use, uh, number three. I'll use grade four. Just to give you a heads up. If I can provide, if I can provide grade four, I'd like to see what type of bid they can give us.
All right.
So all we're doing right now is just approving, uh, solicitation at this point in time.
Correct.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
So we got a motion from Bruce, second from Leon to, let's go out and approve solicitations for bids. Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number, uh, eighteen. Mr. C, consider and approve request for proposals for solid waste collections.
Okay, I put this, this is up on, uh, November ninth. I put this on here to see what direction y'all want to go. Uh, the current contract allows for one more additional year, uh, at the same rate, same terms, and. at the same rate, same terms and conditions. Uh, I talked to Mr. Hovey. I think he's here. Yeah, that's where you can think they want to increase in the rate. So, you know, to me, we, we don't allow the increase in rates when we renew for another year. We do the same, same terms you have now. And usually, to be fair to other vendors, if they want, if the current one wants to go up, we usually don't let it renew. Unless they want to like extend this, they want to go back and do it at the same rate. But I don't know if y'all wouldn't.
Well, it's more adjustment terms, so much so rates.
Would be all, if y'all, uh, I think, okay, our next meeting would be what? October seventh? You can table this for right now and discuss it and put it on the next one. We still would be okay for October ninth. So.
I'd like to table to give, uh, management opportunity and, uh, you and Matthew to discuss, especially since there's contract in back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Make a motion for table list.
Okay. Well, I got a, got a motion from Bruce to table.
Second.
Thanks, sir. Second from Leon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Where am I specific to?
Specific to target.
Absolutely. Yes, we'll get it over to you.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, number nineteen from Mr. C, consider and approve solicitation of bids for fuel. I bet this is going to be a wild one.
Yeah, this is currently, it didn't end up until November twenty fifth. So we got plenty of time. Uh, it also has an extension available and we asked the vendor, we have now synergy and we haven't heard back from them. So if you're happy with their service, uh, complete it on the next quarter. Definitely get it to same, the same markup, same rate they have now.
Yeah. Same rate.
Yeah, yeah. It's only if they, they don't, we'll put it on the, uh, next quarter and we go offer bids.
Again, this is just, uh, approving the solicitation of bids.
Yeah, we would want to table this.
Yeah, yeah, make a motion to table.
Table, okay.
Uh, second, that's a good one.
Got a motion from Bruce to table, second from Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays.
Y'all seen the process right?
I mean, that, that motion does carry. Thank you. Uh, from Mr. C on the twenty, consider and approve recommendation for award of RFP number twenty-three dash team for over sixty-five retiree insurance.
Okay, so we have been a star. We, I think we've had them for several years. Uh, Fraser's office and the retirees all seem to be real happy with them. Uh, it's a supplement, you know, you're over sixty-five, you have Medicare and this is a supplement to your Medicare, uh, policy. Uh, also they wanted, they, we could have renewed for another year, but they wanted an increase. So we went ahead and did an RFP. Uh, they're the only ones that responded. Plus we have a quote from TAC.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then we took the number, the current number of retirees, I think it's eighty-three. Fraser's office made these calculations based on that eighty-three, what it would cost us. Uh, GC tax, the, the good plan is pretty comfortable with what we have. Almost what? Two hundred thousand dollars more a year. So we definitely want to consider that. Their package two is lower, but it's also a lot less benefited than they currently have. So, uh, Tim and I and, uh, Joanne Smith, because she was on the insurance committee and I brought it to you. But she kind of represented retirees, uh, recommend that we just stay with Benestar. It's the best price right now. It's a little an increase. I think there were, if I remember right, there were like two hundred and ninety-six thousand last year. So it's a slight increase. Yeah. Yeah.
Make a motion to stay with Benestar. Aye.
Okay, you got a motion from Bruce, second from Leon to remain with Benestar for the twenty twenty-four year. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's see. Eric, got one more for you. Consider and approve payment to Cadence Bank for the payoff of lease number. Uh, well, it's the lease number for two dump trucks in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-eight cents for Roden Bridge precinct two.
This is, uh, two dump trucks, I believe, right?
Yeah.
And if we, this is the payoff if we, uh, if they receive a check by next Thursday. If he wants, he wants to purchase them and we'll be out of that lease alone.
Okay. Let's see. Got a motion from Leon.
Second.
Second for Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-two from Mr. C, consider and approve purchase of encryption services for the county radio system for Motorola in the amount of a hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars to be paid from the ARPA funds. And, uh, one quick question. I don't see Billy here, but I see Bill is here. Sheriff, uh, y'all are moving the dispatch. You started yesterday, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
And how long do you think it's going to take to get them up?
Uh, they said probably about tomorrow, hopefully.
Okay.
They're testing it. It's pretty good.
Okay. Bill, you want to, uh, explain the encryption service part of those?
Encryption program.
Come on up a little closer, please.
The encryption is a, uh, program we have to install in law enforcement radios in case they're involved in a chase where they can, if they go outside of the county, they'll be able to talk to that county of deputy that's involved through chase as well. So it kind of secures a champ where nobody else can really hear what they're saying, uh, the public wants.
Mm-hmm.
But they, they can talk amongst each other. So it's an encryption type where, you know, we need to secure them on our chats.
Pretty nice. The bad guy might have a scanner in his truck. Yeah.
So that, that, we, we discussed that during the purchase of these radios. We feel like it's best to go ahead and get this thing, uh, we'd like to go and get it installed. And it's, it's for law enforcement. We're going to go ahead and do for other constables and that.
Derek, you have anything you want to add to that?
I think he's doing a fine job, Jerry.
Wonderful.
Yeah. I think we're approved.
Got a motion from.
Thank you.
Greg to approve, second from David. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Bill.
Number twenty-three from Mr. C, consider and approve recommendation for award of bid number twenty-three dash seventeen for courtroom technology. Boy, we've been, we've been beating up on this a while. I know Lee's going to be happy to finally hear something out of it. So.
Okay, so the, uh, the evaluation committee was Lee, Nick and Don. Uh, they met several weeks ago and evaluated the two bidders were BIS and JAVS, J A V S. Uh, BIS was rated quite a bit higher. Uh, their, their quote was a little bit higher, but then they met with them last week to, to kind of finalize, they get the, the best and final offer. And it actually went down thirty or forty thousand dollars and they, they lowered it quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
And unless Lee knows something different, they were supposed to send us that updated quote they agreed on Friday. So that's to Stephanie and they never, they haven't yet. But he did call yesterday and said he'd like another meeting with the evaluation committee. So I don't know if he needs clarification or if they're going to change that, that quote. So I guess we need to table it till we get a, a actual quote from them.
I would suggest that we do table, um, what say the court?
Make a motion to table.
There. Okay, got a motion from Leon, second from Greg to table. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays.
Harold, would you kind of just give us a recap on what, uh, all the technology would, uh, consist of?
Uh, Lee would be better at that than I am.
It's a combination, um, of technology we need for commissioners court and that the county courts need to do trials and jury trials. It's, uh, speakers, microphones, um, there's a, a piece of equipment that the, uh, higher bidder proposed that the others didn't, that for instance, if we had, uh, this piece of paper that Harold gave us, we set it on it, it would immediately show up on the monitors for everyone to see. I forget what it's called. It's like a document camera. That's included, uh, showing videos, uh, making them part of our Zoom meetings, uh, all of that kind of technology is part of it. It also allows for remote hearings with the jail, which is essential, um, and, uh, it would allow us to do hearings or commissioners court meetings and hearings from Jack Hurtell as well as this courtroom. It puts technology into Crown Court of Law number two, which was omitted when we built that room and they need it very badly. And, uh, and of course it links us up to the jail so we could do, uh, hearings at jail.
Thank you.
We'll get rid of these wires on this floor that I keep.
And the little, like, microphone and everything, everything's going.
I still like the big microphone. You can use them though. All right, that motion did, uh, carry to table and we'll, we'll review it next go around. Uh, number twenty-four from Mr. C, consider and approve renewal of lease number, uh, double O two zero, zero, seven, zero, eight, nine, zero, eight, dash, zero, one, zero with Cadence Bank for one, twenty twenty-three Mack Pinnacle sixty-four T dump truck with a tiger dump body for Roden Bridge number three. And that's just renewing the lease, correct?
Yes, that's.
Okay, David.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, Jim. Yes, sir.
Number fourteen, I'm gonna put in on number fourteen, the map needs to change to thirty-six.
Thirty-six what?
Yeah, I think we'll need a motion to amend that, that, that part.
Okay, um, we can go back, have a motion to rescind, take a vote. Okay, number fourteen. Uh, need a motion to rescind.
Make the motion to rescind.
One second.
Got a second, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Now, once again, consider and approve the payment of invoice to LJ Engineering in the amount of thirty-six thousand?
Sure.
Seven thirty-five for the wastewater engineering services for city of Harden. Be paid from ARPA funds. Mayor Johnson signed all the invoices, what say the court?
Make a motion.
Okay, got a motion from Leon, second from Greg. Once again, thank y'all for remembering you did what at that point was. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-five, uh, from Gospel Hartness. Consider and approve interlocal agreement by between state, uh, Texas State University in Liberty County Gospel Precinct Six to conduct by stings of retail outlets in Liberty County in violation of Texas Health Safety Code, uh, canon one, six, one point zero eight two in exchange for reimbursement cost of nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And Matthew, you want to kind of explain this for one? It's basically just, they get the money, uh, supplied by, well, the Texas State University, correct?
Correct, yeah. And then, and then they, yeah, try to go buy a cigarette or whatever.
They try to find the youngest looking possible they've got and let it sit in there. Is that it?
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, okay. We got a motion from Bruce. Is that second Greg?
Yes, sir.
Second from Greg, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-six, uh, from Mr. Poston, uh, consider and approve a renewal of the lease agreement for twen- nineteen fifteen Trinity Street, Liberty, Texas, seven, seven, five, three, five. And that is the law, my understanding.
That's correct.
It's, uh, the lease agreement is going up just a small number. It's not extraordinary.
That is correct. Um, the agreement is otherwise the same, same terms, the two-year agreement. However, the only term that we're always changing is, is the rent is during term twelve fifty, uh, per month to thirteen hundred. That's the, that's reasonable.
That's reasonable, yeah.
Make a motion to approve that.
Uh, you got a motion for Bruce, second from David to approve. Further discussion? Glad there's not going to be a discussion on fifty dollars, y'all. Thank you so much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you. Number twenty-seven from Mr. C, uh, consider and approve change order number one for the addition of a fire sprinkler system to the construction of the metal building and equipment shed at the Hardtail Building utilizing ARPA funds. And this is, uh, chief, help me on this. This is by code of the city of.
It's by the city of Liberty County, so we're not about that.
Yes, sir. Okay, so it is a change order that will.
The, yes, the, uh, addition, I think we covered with Stephanie this morning was, uh, eighty-seven thousand?
Eighty-six thousand, seventy-seven dollars.
Eighty-six thousand what?
Oh, seven, seven.
Now, she said there was an extra price for a monitoring panel, but since this is a storage facility are we required to have that? Do we not require that?
Okay. So it's nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five.
I mean, there's nine thousand what?
Nine, seven, five.
I'll see any way we can get out of this. Uh, make a motion to approve the eighty-six thousand, seven, seventy-seven dollars for the sprinkler system and the nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five for the monitoring system. To be paid out of ARPA funds.
Okay, have a motion from Bruce. There, you know, second from Greg, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number twenty-eight from Mr. Poston, consider and approve the following variance request together with an application for final plat for a new additional section of the private subdivision, Artesian Lakes, located near Roemer, Texas in precinct three.
Yeah, that's a typo. My fault.
In precinct two.
For all those people worried of. I'm gonna change it.
Yeah, we don't, really don't want to scare David. In precinct two, Liberty County, said variance being composed of a twenty-foot wide road easement, a fifteen-foot building setback, a ten-foot utility easement on both sides of the roadway. Private roads have no maintenance or drainage responsibility for the county drainage, uh, for the county drainage states, uh, the final plat application only. And this is once again up in Artesian Lakes. We, this is on the table from last time to get the language more sufficient.
Yes, that's it. Otherwise it's, it's exactly, uh, the same as last time, ready for the fourth session.
Yes.
I was going to object to that because I thought he was trying to trade me for one of his subdivision.
But I like my one proof.
Got a motion from Greg, second Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was that now, Leon?
Aye.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. And that motion does carry. Number twenty-nine, uh, consider and approve amending the twenty twenty-three holiday scheduled to move the Columbus Day holiday from October twelfth to October ninth due to clerical error. Wow. We make errors. Anyway, what it is, it, uh, it's the way it fell on the calendar. And I would appreciate your consideration.
Make a motion to approve.
We got a motion from Leon, second from Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Uh, next one up is from Mr. Brown, uh, Brother Rick. We're going to consider and approve the cash handling policy for the tax office. Although at this point in time, I prefer that we go into executive session.
That's what I've been for.
For this, uh, consideration. So I would like, uh, well, motion to move into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Aye.
Uh, there will be deliberations, let's see. I think. I think, yeah, five-five-one-oh, personnel matters and then uh, five-five-one-oh-seven-one. Okay, we got a motion and a second to move an executive session. All in favor, say aye. We're there. We are back in regular session and out of executive session. It is now um, eleven oh three. And uh we had entered into executive session under uh, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one consultation with attorney and also five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four personnel matters. Uh, the question being cash handling policy for tax office, which was a continuation from the uh August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three Commissioners Court uh session uh, that we previously held. Uh, at this time, what is court's pleasure?
Make a motion, take no action.
Got a motion, Bruce, take no action. Second from Leon. Uh, any further discussion? Therefore being none, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion to adjourn is by Bruce. Second, David. Uh, all in favor to adjourn, say aye.